I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting in order. It's Monday, November 19, 2018. The time is 9:02. If everybody could stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, can you call the roll please?
Okay. Mr. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Reagan?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
And Mr. Joe Redd?
Here.
First, we need approval of minutes for the November 5th meeting.
I move that way, so.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have contracts and agreements for approval. We have an application for edict grant funds from Mr. Mack Hines from Big Time Barbell.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning. Thank you for having me again today. Nothing's really changed. Sherry came to the facility, started seeing some of the renovations. We hope that you guys, other members, can make it out at some time. I know you're busy. We thank you for any and all your help that you can give us. That's all I have.
Just to recap, Mack, you've been doing really well out there. And with your program, you have several participants in your rehabilitation groups.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that just a little?
Yeah. Like I said, last meeting, we started out with one. And it didn't take very long to where we exceeded maximum occupancy of our conference room that we built originally. We've been getting anywhere between probably seventeen and thirty-five twice a week. We've given out two more scholarships since the last time we had met. So we have four scholarships given to the people that participate in those meetings. There is prerequisites. We could give those out all day long, but there is prerequisites that have to be followed to continue the scholarship program. And that's pretty cut and dry. You have to stay sober. You have to attend the meetings and the group workouts. And we're just seeing a great change in people. It's really nice to see somebody come in completely broken, not sure they want to be there or why they're there. They're just there. And to somebody that's actually living life that's clean and sober, so.
I did stop in Saturday. Now, I didn't do the workout or anything. What is a membership, Mack?
The membership to the general public's $35 a month. And then we take a portion of that membership and put it into our general scholarship fund. So it averages out, depending on the meetings, between $10 and $15 a month. Out of that 35 goes into the general scholarship fund. That fund, even though it's all one fund, but that portion of that fund set aside for four scholarships and stuff that is for those individuals. So we have four trainers working with the facility. We're all on a volunteer basis. We do the meetings on Mondays and Wednesdays at 6:30. Typically lasts about 45 minutes to an hour on Monday. And then we do about a half-hour group workout. Wednesday kind of flip-flops. It's about a half-hour meeting with about an hour to hour and a half, depending on people. You get 30 people in group workouts, split up in groups of four or five. It takes a little longer to go through the routine, so sometimes two hours. But it's been very successful. The membership, like I said, according to our five-year financial analysis that we did at the Small Business Administration at the Innovation Connectors, we've exceeded our...we got over 50 members. And according to that analysis, we were going to reach 50 members going in on the second year. So we're just less than six months into it, and we've already reached the start of our second-year number. So I say we're exceeding our expectations. We just hope to continue to draw people in for the addiction recovery. That's the sole purpose of what we're doing here.
Mack, you guys also work with road to addiction also, don't you?
Yes. Yeah. Me and Brian work together. He helps me with the individual and the group counseling. And I work with him on his group counseling on Thursdays. I just thought my volunteer to do extra...we kind of try to correlate the meetings on days so a person could actually come to our meeting on Monday, his small group meeting on Tuesday, then our meeting again on Wednesday, and then his large group on Thursday and cover most of the week because we feel like the more meetings that are available to an individual, the higher percentage of success that you're going to have.
Do you also like to go to drug court and veterans' court and help out?
Yeah.
Are they also known to you?
Yeah. I typically attend most every week to drug court. I sit often to the jury side. If there's any questions for somebody that's on the stand or the judge has any questions about recovery or opportunities for recovery, they do call on me and Brian to offer our insight.
Right. And because one thing I want people to understand is you guys will be paid for a lot of this.
I don't get paid for anything.
So you guys are doing this voluntarily to help our citizens that have an addiction to become a better citizen within our community, help them get off the drugs. I've been looking into a lot of rehab and rehabilitation. And what you do is a big part of the rehabilitation because the workouts, the running, you're sweating those chemicals they have in your body. You're detoxing your body from those chemicals. So that is a big part of rehabilitation, is to get that out of your system.
You know, through the research that I've done early into this venture, I was putting the correlation between physical fitness and drug addiction. Physical fitness utilizes the same endorphin as drugs and alcohol. So when you're hit a certain amount of time in your sobriety, your mind, your body wants to have those endorphin rushes that it can achieve because it's been chemically introduced. A normal person has a certain amount of dopamine rushes every day, and that keeps your stress levels down. That's your kind of euphoric feelings that you get. You're happy. When you chemically induce that for long periods of time, your body quits doing that on its own. So your mind really manipulates your body to seek out not the drugs, the dopamine rush that it gets from the effect from the drugs. The same dopamine is utilized in your brain when your body gets put in a stressful situation. So physical fitness triggers your brain to force an endorphin rush. So your body, your mind gets that kick of that endorphin rush that it was seeking originally. It's not actually seeking the drugs. It's seeking the endorphin rush. So the physical fitness puts your body in a stressful situation, triggers your brain to send off dopamine, and your body's satisfied with that rush. That's the secondary part of why this is very successful.
Yes. And I really appreciate it. It's very secure. You have to have a swipe card to get in and save. His wife was there running. He was out half a day off in front of the family. But one thing I would like for Brad to kind of oversee is the accountability that these funds are...and he just needs some fundraisers, too, Brad. We just need to get the community aware of what's happening and maybe know the open house.
Well, this is one thing I'd like to say about Mack. Mack's just not talking about it. He's just not showing up to our meetings and saying, "We need drug rehab. We need to do this. We need to do that," like a lot of people do. Mack came in here and he said, "We need drug rehab. I'm going to do something about it. Can you guys help me?" We've been helping Mack. He needs more help to help our citizens of this community to grow and to get better.
You've also applied for other grants and received other grants from the community as well, correct?
Yeah. We received a $10,000 grant back in July for Community Champions Fund. And we've also did the preliminary measures for the Community Foundation Grant. They have changed their laws of how they give applications out. So we're in the process of going through their liaison to try to get an application. Those used to be able to get applications. Now you have to go through a process before they even give you an application, so.
Commissioner Reagan, Brad Bookout, Delaware County Economic Development and Redevelopment will continue to work with Mack and continue to monitor his progress. He's been great about communication, working with the Small Business Development Center. So we'll make sure that continues into his second year.
Because I think your annual report hits 501(c)(3).
Right. Correct.
So if you can help him on that.
Yeah. Absolutely. Will do.
Thanks a lot.
One of the things is Mack doesn't get a dime.
Oh, I admit.
Helping everybody. I sat down with the gentleman not too long ago with Mr. Bookout, talking about drug rehabilitation. This guy was talking about his salary, around a quarter of a million dollars if this started. You know, this guy's doing it for free. Honestly, I don't think we could do the whole 25.
I would make a motion we do half of them.
Do 12 of them. I'd make a motion we do half.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Mack, do you have anything else to add? Or Brad?
No. I just want to thank you for any help that we can get. Like I said, we're doing the renovation to make the meeting room up to par. I think we should be able to get probably close to 60 into this next room. So I just thank you Commissioners for your continued support. We couldn't do this without you guys, so it's really been a group effort as for our community, so.
Well, thanks to you and the folks that you have working with you, and we greatly appreciate you guys, too.
Thank you.
Keith, did you go out maybe one time or have one of your reporters go out? I think this would be a great story for the community to get out to let them know what these guys are actually doing. And I mean, they're doing it for free, for nothing, just grants and whatever we can help out. But I think this would be a great story for our community.
I did talk to your landlord, Mr. Wise, and he's very impressed with the crowd and attendance and the parking, you know, sharing the space outside. So you've come a long way, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Denise, can you call the roll please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Absolutely, yes. Thanks, Matt. Good job, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Next on the agenda, we have the CHA Engineering Agreement. Mr. Bookout?
Commissioners, good morning again. You've been provided the CHA Engineering Updated Agreement for the Rail Spur Access Easement. Charlie Starling from CHA is here today. The attorney has had proper time to approve this. I think he did ask me one question via email last week. I think we got that taken care of. I'm happy to answer any of your questions. It's been a long process to get even to the point where we're at today, but we continue. I'd like to let you know also that I confirmed with Ginny this morning that there are sufficient funds in the Edit Rail Spur Account Project 38 to fund this. So money does exist in the account today.
You did look this over, yeah? I did, yeah. Everything pretty straightforward.
What kind of timeline, Brad, are we working on? Someone just asked me yesterday.
You know, I'd like to be able to give you a more definitive timeline. I thought two years ago when we started working on this that we'd be a little bit farther along. One of the obstacles, of course, is working with Gear Systems USA and Ravini on the actual right-of-way acquisition. And I think we're closer now than we have been in the past. So I'm hopeful that next year...I'm hesitant to even say next year, but I'll throw out. I'm hopeful next year we could possibly get to construction on this project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is a fee, not TICC, what?
$46,365.
I make a motion we approve the agreement.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the BIS Agreement for Juvenile Courts.
Hello, Emily Anderson Court Administrator. I sent you a copy of our contract for juvenile court. This is an upgrade to their system. We've spoke about the recording equipment. The courts are about 11 years old. This upgrade will push them through out there and hopefully another 10 years. So we're going to do juvenile court first, and then next year we're going to work on the main courts.
Where does this money come from?
This is coming from council approved...this is for next year. Council approved money in my budget for...they cut it in half. I was trying to do all of the courts at once, so I'm taking what I have and doing juvenile court first. And then we talked about the other courts, Mr. King. We'll have to discuss next year. We're getting new quotes for that. But this is going to start...we're trying to get it on the books so we can get it started, but it won't be charged to me until next year where I can pay it out of that budget.
I agree. We agree. Yeah, I agree.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have SRI Commissioners' Deed Service Addendum.
This agreement basically describes the responsibilities of SRI and what they charge and what we agree that we're going to do to take these properties to deed and sell them at a deed sale.
Janet, you and I were talking about if we wanted to remove some because I think it was going to be like $98,000 if we did them all. So is there a problem with...there's different classifications to...I think we have it broken down, don't you?
Oh.
Residential, commercial.
Right. Right.
And since this is our first deed sale because we have to put the money upfront, and if we put that, what was it, $265,000?
$275,000.
$275,000. So that's a lot of money just to lay out there and something that sits there.
I mean, I suppose you can take whatever you want out. I think when these were originally chosen, the list...I mean, the list was created based on a much larger list, and this is just what was left.
Right.
But I think you guys approved the list at the last meeting, maybe? So it'd be a matter of...
Well, after I did some math, yeah. I guess that's a lot of money.
Yeah. It'd just be a matter of going through and narrowing that list down to what you want to actually conclude, but aside from that.
I just want to tell you the timeline that we're working on.
Well.
Once these properties were in the tax sale, October 2nd, we have 120 days to order title search and to send out notifications. Well, actually, we only have 90 days to send out the notices. There's 120-day redemption period. So we're looking at December 30th, we have to send out notices. We've already sent the list to the title company. And just remember, if they're redeemed, we've already redeemed three or four of them. We get that money back. And if they're sold, we get that money back.
But if they're not sold, we don't?
Right.
Also, keep in mind that if they're not sold, they're going to go through the tax sale process again, which is going to cost you more money.
Well, I guess we just need to put the money in our edict plan then.
Or get rid of some of these properties somehow.
Yeah.
There's no way I know...I mean, I went through every single one of them in our system and eliminated some of them that have environmental issues and some of them that have civil penalty issues. But other than that, there's no way I know what condition these properties are in.
Nate, do you guys still work with the people that do the housing for veterans?
Yes.
Yes.
We do.
Actually, I was just going to just text you guys. I may actually have a few people that may be willing to pick these properties up and be able to pay the taxes on those properties. So I don't know if that's something you guys would be interested in or not, but...
I was wondering, I mean, if they're for nonprofit?
Yeah.
And if they are willing to sign some kind of contract with the county where they will demolish the buildings to...maybe we can get rid of some of the properties that way and plus help with good cause.
There's also an organization that's looking into doing some of the tiny homes for veterans.
Right.
We've been trying to work with Ball State University on that, and so I'll get in touch with some of those folks and get that squared away.
And just remember, I've reached out to other nonprofits, too, and they're interested in some of these properties, so...and it's an easier process for nonprofits.
Right.
And they can get the deed within a matter of a couple of weeks after the sale, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
I agree. See what we can do if I have to get rid of them before we...
I have to stay a while, Matt.
Just give it to you.
Yeah. I will say there's going to be one minor change right off the bat and maybe another, but we'll make that change. I don't think you guys have the actual agreement in your stack.
No, we don't.
Yeah.
It's...
Can we table it until the December 3rd meeting?
Sure.
Would that be all right? That way we can get everything worked out.
Yeah. That's fine with me. It's fine with you.
I make a motion we table the SRI addendum.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for table the addendum. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next, we'll move to ordinances for first reading. We have ordinance number 2018-015, an ordinance adopting countywide grant policy to establish uniform grant approval and record-keeping procedures.
Joe, you want to fill us in?
Sure. I was kind of hoping Steve might be here for this one, but...so basically, State Board of Accounts has a policy they like to see these municipal entities having, and this county does not have that. So basically, Steve wanted to adopt State Board of Accounts model policy, which is the first Exhibit A of the ordinance. It's very simple and straightforward. It just basically creates some accountability from the departments requesting the grant money and the audit office. There needs to be better communication between the two because right now there's not. So this policy will...you know, basically, so there has to be better reporting from the people receiving grant money to the audit office, who ultimately are responsible for keeping records of all these grants.
Steve's a meeting that was required.
I figure Joe has an excuse for everything, doesn't he? No. I mean, he and I communicated beforehand, and that's how this was all created. He closed what he wanted, and this is what we got from it.
I'll make a motion we introduce ordinance number 2018-015.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for introduction. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Joe, we should suspend the rules on these and...
Yeah. Might as well get it all done.
All four of them?
Yes.
I move that we suspend the rules on all four of them today.
Let's just do the...
Yeah, we can only do one at a time.
Suspend the rules first. Yeah. We go to suspend the rules first.
05, 15.
I'll second. Our motion is suspend the rules.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion we adopt 2018-015.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adoption. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Next is ordinance number 2018-016, ordinance approving the acceptance of Office of Justice Program's federal grant award and authorizing the establishment of Necessary Grant Fund.
How are you? I'm Dr. Morgan, Sheriff's Elvis.
Turn around.
That's why I walked this way. I didn't want to be by the camera.
You're still on camera here.
Hopefully, you guys will approve this grant, $17,400. Basically, it's upgrading the current crime reporting with new rules. This will give us the funds to upgrade that and then stay in compliance with the new guidelines that they're giving us.
I'll make a motion we introduce ordinance 2018-016.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
I would add that suspend the rules also.
I'll make a motion we suspend the rules.
I'll second it. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion we adopt ordinance 2018-016.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adoption. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance number 2018-017, an amendment to ordinance 2018-004, continuing the moratorium on certain use within farm zoning in Delaware County, Indiana.
Pretty much will extend this within past...
I think it's just to extend the date, isn't it, Joe?
That's all it does, is extend it January 22nd. Would this be...
We only need one reading.
Can we amend that, correct?
Yep.
I'll make a motion we adopt ordinance number 2018-017.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance number 2018-018, ordinance establishing Delaware County Sheriff's Jag Band.
Greg Olson, NYPD Sheriff's Department. This is the grant we do every year. It's a joint grant with the Monsey Police Department. I will note this is 2017 because the feds are running a little behind getting us our money. So we have been approved for '18, so in another three weeks, month, I'll be back to do another one for the '18.
I'll make a motion we introduce ordinance 2018-018.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for introduction. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
And Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion we suspend rules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I'll make a motion we adopt 2018-018.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adoption. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next, we have ordinance number 2018-019, ordinance to amend ordinance number 2017-027 for Delaware County Health.
Good morning Commissioners. Jamie Vane, Health Department Administrator. You should all have a copy of that new ordinance that we presented for your consideration. If you'd like, I can go there and point out the changes from the previous ordinance.
Yeah, be good, Jamie.
I'll just go down the line, starting in the first section of vital records. We increased birth certificate fees from $15 to $20 and death certificate fees from $10 to $20. Those are pretty significant changes, I understand. I did a review of the 2017 numbers to give you something to consider for comparison here. 2017, we sold 4,824 birth certificates and 7,966 death certificates. That brought in a total of $152,000. Using those same numbers under the new cost, we would be bringing in $255,800. This is one of those necessary devils with our ongoing budget cuts, not necessarily due to anything local, not due to councils, mainly due to circuit breaker property taxes. I don't know if you guys are aware, but at... I don't know if you guys are aware, but at budget time, of course, we had the, reviewed down by a consulting firm, had us down to basically having a negative balance in 2021 is where we ended up. This, combined with some other changes, is going to have us good to go for a number of years based on our projections. That was reviewed and approved by council, of course. And these fees have all been reviewed and approved by the health board as well. Want to throw all that in for you. Moving down the line, food safety. There's a new seasonal retail food establishment fee in there. What happened about 15 years ago, health department had a very basic fee schedule. So we would just plug people in to whichever one was the closest fit. Somewhere along the lines, they started creating new fees, trying to be more specific for different situations. And that's actually created a lot of confusion and a lot more work. But we've created this fee here. The fees are the same as what these people have been paying all along, it's based on square footage. But most recently, they've had a late fee if they didn't renew by December 31st. Now, what's difficult there is a lot of these businesses are seasonal where they don't open until May or June. And they don't know whether they're going to open in May or June until closer to that time. So people were being stuck in a position where they had to make a decision to put their money down upfront or wait and decide later and pay the hundred-dollar late fee. So by the creation of the seasonal, we're, it's basically giving them the ability to buy a six-month permit and not have a late fee. The next change, there's an addition of acute care facility with a 1,290 dollar permit fee. This is a new change. The state health department has decided that they are going to pass down the inspection responsibilities of acute care facilities, so here, IU, BMH, to the local health departments. We have very little information on that so far. We know it's handed off to us. We know it's our responsibility effective January 1. The fee, the 1,290, was come about by discussion with our health board and the belief that that's a good starting fee that may have to increase in coming years. We're going to send two to three inspectors to the hospital on each one of these inspections versus just one on a normal inspection. And we're projecting that that inspection could take almost an entire day, if not longer. Because it's not just inspecting a cafeteria, it's going to be inspecting every refrigerator throughout the entire hospital that holds any kind of perishable food item that would go to the public or a patient of the hospital. In addition to a number of other aspects, their food storage, any off-site storage areas that they have. So that's where we came about that fee there. A little further down, under temporary food establishments, the acquired less than seven days in advance aspect of it is a new change, a new addition to the fee schedule. We're trying to incentivize people to get their permits in advance of any temporary food events rather than the day before those temporary food events. Our department works with they, each week, we have an on-call inspector who's handling anything that's after hours. And more often than not, what will end up happening is we'll make plans for this one inspector to be working on Saturday, thinking that they're going to be able to handle an event by themselves, and it's going to take them two or three hours. So we'll shift their work week to try to avoid accruing too much comp time. And then Friday, we'll have the majority of the vendors come in by their permits, and suddenly, we're scrambling to get a second inspector to assist them. We're trying to incentivize that people to get their permits in advance. I believe that is a summary of our changes that you see here versus the previous ordinance. If you have any questions you may have?
No, I'm sure his board has worked very diligently to get this done. Appreciate it. Something you have to do, you have to do.
I'll make a motion, we introduce ordinance 2018-019.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Denise, can you call the roll please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Janet.
Next, we'll move to department heads or elected officials. We'll move down the payment of claims in an amount of $2,321,739 and 35 cents.
Second.
Have a motion a second. Denise, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we'll move to public comments. Do you want to have anyone?
Paul Schreier, 71108 Centennial Muncie. There's a subject that's been bothering me for a couple of months anyway that I'd like to bring back up again. Farmer owner Steve Shreves came and asked for an ordinance to change so that if there was a commercial sewage unit with their line going in front of their house within so many feet that if he had to hook into the system and pay the commercial fee. He founded ordinance or law in Indiana and brought it to the commissioners' attention that if you own 20 acres, joining that property, that you have a working septic system approved by the Board of Health that you did not have to hook into that. So far, him and I are the only two that have commented on this that I'm aware of. The reason, I wondered why the state of Indiana would even make such an ordinance or law. And the best that I could figure out was is the commercial sewage departments pick out housing additions and whatnot where they can go short distances between houses and collect money for taking care of their sewage. When you're out in the rural area, they're not searching you out. You just happen to be there where they put a sewer system in. That's the case of Mr. Shreves. The Sewer Department went to the city of DeSoto to take and fix their sewage system up, and his house happened to be along the way, so he was an incident that was picked up. The normal person that lives in a housing addition, their mortgage payment generally includes their property taxes and their liability insurance too, the homeowner's insurance. And it's generally less than what they're actually paying if they had to rent that house. Basically, between Mr. Shreves and I, we are larger landowners, but we donate around, better than $50,000 a year to the property taxes of Delaware County. I feel that this is probably the main reason why this law was even established, because we are investors in the county, in that state, and we should be appreciated for doing such. The, probably less than 5% of the people that have, are on the sewage system even has a dog in this fight. Very few people that this line goes in front of actually owns 20 acres or more. The day that Mr. Brooke took and gave an unfavorable recommendation to the commissioners, I got up and asked him why. And I told him at that meeting that I did not understand his reasoning and suggested to him how to correct what he was telling me. And I thought, well, you know, maybe I misunderstood what was going on here. So I waited until the YouTube came out, and I listened to it three times. And I still did not understand what was going on with his reasoning, and I had other people to do the same thing. And they said, well, he didn't say anything to you. So the only conclusion that I can have is, is maybe Mr. Brooke was not looking in the best interest of the Delaware County Commissioners. He was representing the commercial sewage departments that he is affiliated with. I hate to say that, but that's the only conclusion I could come up with. Appreciate you looking into this ordinance again and seeing what you can do to help out the larger landowners of Delaware County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schreier. Mr. Schreier, I understand that you're going to be going to south this winter visiting us anymore. Did someone say you're going to be retiring from attending our meetings?
I think she's asking if you're moving south.
Someone said that you were going to be retiring from visiting our monthly meetings or weekly meetings.
Yes, yes. This may be my last meeting, that I'm going to turn my seat over to somebody else. And hopefully, they're somewhat vocal too.
As a commissioner, we do appreciate the public coming and listening to our meetings and voicing their pros or cons. And I thank you for your public service to Delaware County all these years. Because I believe your father started it.
Yeah, my father was quite active also. I've attended a lot of commissioner and attorney's board meetings over the last 30 years myself, so.
Even though we might not agree, we appreciate your attendance.
I know. That's why I'm up there, I don't agree.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I want to offer one detail to you and Mr. Schreier. I think, I don't know the entire big picture here, but there's one key detail there, I think, kind of pivotal. The Board of Health, Health Department declaring a system as functional. When that rule was created, there was never guidance created on what, how you declare a system functional. And it still has not been created, and there has been no guidance from the state on declaring one functional. So the reality is, if a system is not up to the current standard of what was adopted maybe three years ago by the state, which most systems 15 to 20 years older would not be, it's not going to get an approval. So if there's an older system, it's not going to get an approval under any guidance that we have. So if we were to, if we were to be forced at the local level to create our own, how do you approve a system? It's going to involve a contractor uncovering the entire system for everything to be reviewed and inspected and for it to be rebuilt to the current standard. That would change a lot of things. I don't know, it would be based on the home, and in a commercial situation, then the state health department would have to come in and do the inspection. And I think the approval process would be handed off to them. I understand that they don't want to approve anything that would be outside of the scope of those local rules.
Does anybody else?
Not at all. And a motion resists.
Second.
Hold a favor, say aye?
Aye.